Council calling me order for the record. It is September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at four thirty-three P M. Open this city council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro. Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland. Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I move that we modify the agenda to add an executive session per Idaho code seventy-four dash two oh six one D.
Second.
A motion of second to modify the agenda. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Aye.
And the agenda is modified.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
With that amendment, I move that we adopt the amended amended agenda.
Second.
A motion of second to adopt the amended agendas. There in discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the amended agenda is adopted. Next item up is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
That we approve the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the consent agendas. There in discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the consent agendas agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agendas. We'll move on to item sixteen and our department commission reports, which is declaration twenty-three dash zero 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 one. A declaration of the city clerk establishing the election of John Overton to district four seat for the Meridian City Council. I will turn this over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really just an informative declaration. Idaho code section fifty-four oh five-two was amended in July twenty twenty directing the city clerk to cancel any election in which there's only one candidate. Our district for election, council member John Overton was the only person who filed the declaration to candidacy. There were no write-ins. So following Idaho code, I am simply declaring him the winner of that and he will not appear on ballots in district four.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, this was kind of a new wrinkle that was added to the code in twenty twenty. It, there is no discretionary action on the part of the city. This statute is very specific. It says when this occurs, no elections will be held and the clerk shall declare the the election over. So really, the declaration doesn't even require council approval. It really is just a public notice that there will be no election for district four seat for for Meridian City Council in the upcoming election. But everyone in that district will still be able to vote for the mayor. So they will be able to vote, just not for the district.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Not a question, but a comment. It's a declaration, but I think we can still throw in our two bits. The district process is certainly new to us. But it's not necessarily surprising to me that somebody didn't file to run in the seat. I think Councilman Overton has had decades of service to this community. He's known by most everybody already, even before he started to serve, and he has certainly jumped in to fill shoes and done an admirable job. You're an excellent councilman. It's no surprise the community supports you and those in your district have had no concern with you continuing to serve in that capacity. No, your fellow council members love serving with you. You just do an excellent job. So we're proud and happy to have you. And I'm excited that this declaration happens. It's a bit anticlimactic. But I really think it's a testament to the fact that people are pleased and proud of your service and happy to have you continue to do so for two more years. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
One more note for the record, and we did put it in the declaration, but for the public's purpose. Again, Councilman Overton was appointed to serve the remainder of Councilman Burnt's term. So that's why he would have been on the ballot according to the statute. Would, it was required for him to be on the ballot for the remainder of the two years. This being called now simply is just again for the remainder of the two years, and then his term will be up in two years if he wants to run again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Councilman Overton. I just want to say I look forward to spending the next couple years with you if I am lucky enough to be back. But either way, we're happy to see you up here. Appreciate you.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I echo the comments from my colleagues. But I think there's one more piece that I think is is worth noting as to, you know, Mr. Mayor, you, when Councilmember resigned, you interviewed candidates, people submitted, you went, you went through a full process before this appointment happened. And the fact that nobody else challenged to run for this race, I think, is a good validation that you made the right selection. I'm certainly proud and pleased to have Councilmember Overton as a colleague. I have learned so much from him in the past few months. But I think it's also a good reminder that we have this public process that allows for people to be appointed. And you obviously made the right pick and we're really proud to have him as part of the team.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanagh, but pat yourself a little on the back as well, too, please, for that, helping make that known at the time.
Mr. Mayor, I bring good suggestions. I can suggest we have pizza for dinner, but it's ultimately up to you to choose and you picked the best one. So I'm excited.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
I had shared my congratulations earlier with Councilman Overton and absolutely agree with my fellow counsel that he jumped in just running as fast as he could and have taken a lot of crazy things thrown at him as he stepped into the position and handled it with grace and kindness, and I appreciate that very much. And it is so clear that you love this city and I appreciate how much that you show that as you interact with the members of our community. And it's very fitting that you sit in Trake's seat because he did the same. He, he really wore on his sleeve how much he loves Meridian and I appreciate that same quality from you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Having said all of that, a couple of things, no.
Fair enough. I'll say my comments for when I should get sworn in hopefully at that point in time, but kudos. John's pleasure.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Thank you for the kind words. It's been a pleasure to serve this first year. This is not exactly how I pictured running for an election was going to be. I had other thoughts in mind. My wife is quite pleased that I have a little bit more time to spend with the family now. And quite honestly, now I can focus more attention on the business at hand for the city of Meridian. So that's a bonus in my book. So this is a neat process. We are first experiencing it. I know other cities are as well. And I can't wait to continue to get back to work.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item seventeen, which is presentation review of interactive pathways map. Turn this over to Kim.
Thank you, Mayor Simison, members of the council. I'm pleased to be here to formally introduce our updated pathways map. We were here a couple of months ago to do a pathways update. And during that time, we talked a little bit about the fact that we were working on this map and what this map could be. And we were looking to simplify to come up with a tool that was more friendly and more effective to connect people to the pathways. We've been working with G I S and they've been really wonderful. Just for the record, Cindy Anderson and Teresa Grange. Not only great experts, but patient with our changes and iterations. So we really appreciate their help. So when we did allude to this map a couple of months ago and talked about it with you, got some feedback. Some things we heard, I specifically remember from Councilman Cavanagh and Perro that there was some interest in hitting down the timing of proposed pathways. That it was kind of hard to tell like how soon things were coming. There was an interest in having a mobile app. So we have some thoughts on that. Maybe we show amenities on this map. And then we did invite Liz for a meeting, excuse me, Councilman. Help me.
Strater.
Councilwoman Strater, because her, we were concerned that maybe her input got cut a bit short when we presented the first time. So we had a quick meeting with her and I'll just jump into presenting the map now. So there are two ways to get to the map online or on your phone. You can navigate through the city website or you can search for Meridian Pathways. So if you're going through the website, it's Parks and Recreation and then Pathways. And then to, I apologize. It's Chris gone. I need to get my full screen and I'm not sure how to do that. Pardon me. Okay, so once we're at the site on Parks. Look on the interactive pathways map and it comes in at kind of a reasonable scale. It'll give you a full screen option. There is a tool to, a you are here tool. So this, I'm okay now. Yes, thanks to you. So, you know, it shows us our location here at City Hall Plaza. We have some legend items over here that you can scroll through and you can see it's very simplified compared to what it was previously. The city limits are showing in light gray, the area of city impact in with the dark gray line. I'll show that later. And this map shows existing pathways only. So that people only tune in, get an idea of what's actually out there. So as you zoom in, kind of like any map online, more detail shows up. So micro pathways, you know, sorry, I'm zooming it out. I'm going to go down to Bear Creek because it's a good example. So as you zoom in a little closer, micro pathways show up. We have school properties, parks, properties. Eight County bikeways are overlaid on this map. So where there might be gaps in our system, it's easy to get an idea at least of what might be a reasonable route to take to kind of connect between pathways. One thing that's really neat about this map is you can click on any of the features. And, you know, it'll tell you this is Victory Middle School. There's limited school information for Bear Creek Park, though. It will tell you a size that it's a community park. And then there's a link option to go to the webpage for Bear Creek and their photos and you get a sense of what amenities are there. So that connectivity is kind of useful, or that's a fun feature. And then the other thing you can do is click on the pathway segments themselves. And they'll tell you a, you know, what the length is. So if people, people often call parks and wreck asking like, how long is the loop in Bear Creek Park or how? So this would be one way of getting that information themselves. So then as we zoom back out. And I will point out that it does go all the way to the area of city limit with the dark gray line. And again, city limits are with the shaded area. So it does give you a much better sense of what's there. And if you wanted to go for a long ride, you know, what is your best option? And typically with us, it's the five mile creek. So in addition to existing pathways, we pretty much just left off proposed pathways, but it's possible to toggle those on. For, you know, if you want to get a sense of what is ultimately proposed, we intend these future pathways as more of a long-term plan than anything pending. Councilman Strater, we did add Olive Linder as a north-south spine through Meridian. I think on the map, it's called the Eagle Island Route, but to connect north and south. So we thought that was a good suggestion and that's showing up in the this red line. So the toggle option. And then we also have four pathways like this new segment that's under construction now by the wastewater treatment plant. Showing us coming soon. We're still working out some of the symbology in G I S terms for this. We're able to show sometimes the application itself isn't, or it can be hard to show things exactly like we want. So in this case, we have the dash lines for pathways that are actually under construction. Coming soon, say within the next couple of years, and those are highlighted. So they stand out on the map. Those are generally city projects, but there are a few where, you know, they were approved through development and once those easements come through, for now, I'm just manually changing that on the map. And then we have some projects that are under construction of Parrot Locust Grove, but some on Linder that were recently completed. So I'm able to change the map relatively easily and keep it a bit more current. That's going to depend somewhat on availability, but it's a more versatile tool. So so we, we talked about an app with G I S. And we're certainly open to that idea. But we were pleased to learn that this was a bit more mobile friendly. Like if you're on a tablet or a phone, it will show up and be reasonably navigable, if that's the word. And so we provide pathways data to Google and it is possible to actually navigate using Google Maps. Our pathways are on there and let me turn it over to Steve, who has more firsthand experience with actually putting in a destination and navigating, but with a few little glitches, that works, starting to work. And I think, yeah.
I don't have much to add other than I was excited to find out that you could in Google Maps, if you're navigating, you could switch from vehicle to bicycle or walking and it then changes from just road routes to incorporate pathways. So we do share the the pathway information with Google and Google Navigation will actually use our pathway data if you're walking or riding a bike.
Thanks, Steve. And I believe we share that information. Well, I don't know. It's either, I think it's annually with Google, but it's also possible to put, you know, I've submitted information before, say for the ten the trail hub on Ten Mile Road. You know, if it's not showing up, maybe you know this, but it's possible to just submit to Google and they'll add it to the map once they once they confirm it. So I guess I would ask you to, if you haven't already, take a look and maybe try this either in the field or otherwise. We can continue to talk about an app if that's needed, but I wonder if is that something we should be doing as a city? Or would that be a tool that we can link into that provides a good option? So something for consideration. And I have done a bit more, we don't currently share this pathway information with other sites, but there are a comprehensive trail and pathway sites online, like all trails. It does show some of our pathways in parks. But it doesn't identify the major routes. It needs an update. And then there's another one called hikingproject.com. There's several actually. So I've been researching those a little and I think it's possible to share our information. Maybe just, we might need a means for deciding who and how we share that or just to make, make it widely available. So people can find us because there's quite a bit. There's quite a bit here now. So I would open, stand for questions or just any comments or input you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Council questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks. Well done. I love the new map. I think it's great. I guess what I'm wondering with an app may not be necessary, might also not be very difficult. I guess the only piece you could that I think you could save people on would be going to meridiancity.org/parks or like I did, I went on my phone. or like I did, I went on my phone, had to go through departments, find the Parks Department, find the pathways, just a lot of steps. Whereas I think if you were, when I say an app, I think it could be something very simple, which is like just a direct link to this map that would save people time. But I agree that this map definitely now serves the purpose of what someone would need. And to your point, I did try that Google workaround, and it worked by bike with most of the pathways. So I think if we're updating it regularly to Google, people could use that, which I think is fantastic. I think just showcasing it for people is really good, too, right? And kind of publicizing, I feel like if it was in an app, it's easier to publicize if people could download something, but we could publicize the map, too. I think this is fantastic, and people can see the result of the investment that we've made here because it really is starting to move forward to a point where you could really get around a lot of places via pathway. Thanks for all your hard work on it.
Mayor Simison. That's the woman, Strater. I did forget to show one thing. I appreciate your comments. And I think that the Google option will continue to get better as we give them more data, just refinement over time. Another thing we added to the question of amenities in parks, and we kept this very simple for now, but as you zoom in, there are some icons that show up for restrooms and bike repair stations. And I think we could make this more complex. We could have trash receptacles or drinking fountains, but for now, we have these two things. So that's an added detail that I didn't mention in the first introduction. But feel free to offer any thoughts on what else we might show, either amenities or otherwise. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. So if someone wanted to find the pathways near their home, you're saying they could go to Google and search for the streets that are close to the pathways because we don't have a search option by street or intersection on our website. Is that right?
Oh. So Councilwoman Pro, I think that with the You Are Here, this tool, provided your location is turned on, say, on your device or your computer, you know, will kind of center you on your area. I don't think we have a search option on this map, and that's a good comment because I know like on our city, you know, the GIS map we use for plan review, you can type in Ten Mile and Franklin, and it will take you to roughly that area, just like Google Earth or Google Maps will. So I do think that's an interesting comment and something for us to look into. But I think that once you, you know, the information is on Google, once you have to click to sort of a different base, the base that shows active recreation, I don't know, I don't remember what it's called, but rather than traffic or satellite. So I think that this would locate us on the map, and a search is a great option.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I might recommend the possibility of publishing to the Waze app as well. A lot of folks here locally use that when they're commuting because people can put comments in. So this may even help if there's like a tree limb that fell over one of the pathways and bikes can't get over, you know, just people can put comments in there that could be even helpful to us as a city in maintaining them, especially if folks are going to start using this as another transportation option for commuting. So I would encourage publishing it to everywhere that we have the means to publish it to. Most places, you can do it for free. I use AllTrails. I'm a paid member of AllTrails, and it's a phenomenal app. Also allows people to go in and make individual comments on the different, you know, pathways and dirt paths and whatnot. And so, yeah, I would be in favor of publishing it everywhere that we could get it onto so that we, personally, I think we utilize the resources like AllTrails, like Google Maps, and not need an app. Like I think we could say, we could create links to those apps and just encourage people to use what already exists. Personally, I don't know that there is a necessity for us to create an app from scratch if we can utilize other apps that are widely recognized.
Mayor Simison, one more comment to acknowledge Councilwoman Pro's comment, and also to go back to Councilwoman Strater's comment about just quick access via the website. I think we talked about this a little bit as a group, but I know that I go to, sorry, just if we're at Meridian City or members who of the community who want to access the portal, there's this citizen access that has a few quick links, commonly used links. So again, we don't want to add too much complexity to the website, but maybe this is a place where we could have a quicker access to the pathways map. It's a pretty quick search online, but this might be an option for where to put it so it's a couple of clicks instead of several.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Sidoi.
Comments to a couple of them. One, Councilwoman Strater, I'm very much on target with your comments. And I've been using as my, I think one of the most popular and better online map tools regionally is the Ridge Rivers map. It's not an app. It is an interactive map on the web, like this one. But I do like that when you Google Ridge Rivers map, it comes up with, the first thing that comes up is just online interactive map. You can click on it, and it goes straight there. And that's one thing that I've already brought up with IT, and we're trying to do what we can so that if someone searches Meridian Pathways map, there can be just a click that takes them straight there without having to navigate through the website. So very much trying to do that. And then I've also asked IT, since they are the ones to share the data with Google Maps and others specifically, I've asked them to look into what are the most popular trail apps, AllTrails being one of the obvious ones. But there are others, and saying, how can we push the data to them? And we can add, you know, ways to that list as well. So thank you for the comments.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple more thoughts quickly.
Councilwoman Pro.
So the only other suggestion I have is, I know when I've been, you know, walking our pathways, sometimes it will end, and you're supposed to pick it up at a sidewalk. But because we don't have signage everywhere, you kind of look around and you're like, do I pick it up at the sidewalk? Does it start back somewhere else? And so I'm wondering if we shouldn't color-code the sidewalks and the actual pathways separately, perhaps? Just so that folks know, okay, I am leaving a pathway, going on to a sidewalk, and then picking up a pathway again somewhere else? Just a thought on that, because I know for me, it's been confusing sometimes. Like, I think I take this sidewalk, but I don't know which way I would go to pick the pathway back up. And then I like the idea of actually buying our own domain, like meridianpathways.com or meridiantrails.com or something along those lines so that when there is a Google search, it will pick up the actual request, because I do agree with Councilwoman Strater, that's too clunky to get to it. So if there's an opportunity of picking up domains, they're pretty inexpensive on an annual basis, and publishing that, and it's designed to look at in a mobile view, then again, maybe our own app isn't necessary.
Mayor Simison, Councilwoman Pro. Pardon me.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Had the opportunity last week to do the Parks and Rec tour, three hours, and part of that was a presentation by all different people within the Parks Department. Then part of that was Kim's presentation. And we were out at Five Mile Creek and Black Cat when she spoke. And of course, most of us on the bus picked up our phones and pulled up the map and looked. And what I was impressed with the most since we first started talking about this is the fact that that map was 100% accurate on that section of the Five Mile Creek to exactly where it's approved but not yet built, to where it starts again, all the way back to Ten Mile. I understand this is always going to be a work in progress until all these pathways are down. But I was really impressed with how far it's come and where it sits right now, and totally blown away with artwork, the monuments of Ten Mile, Five Mile Creek, everything they've done to make this city better and give us more options for people for pathways, hopefully to get them off the roadways.
Council, any further questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Sherr.
I think we're at the point in the agenda I move that we go into executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six one D. Second.
Motion second to go into exact session, driving discussion. If not, Cor Corral.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Hi.
Overton. Perot.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
You're muted, Mr. Cavanagh.
Looks like an eye verbally. Borton.
Hi, sorry. Thank you.
All eyes motion carries. We'll move into executive session.